Great, yeah, for the Wakefield Planning Board meeting for July 18th, 2019. If we could all stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, it looks like we're short our ex officio, but we can't seat anybody for Charlie. Donna, would you like to sit in for Mr. Silkox?
Yes, sir.
Great. Any public comment for anything other than what's not on the agenda? For anything that's not on the agenda. Go ahead, Connor.
I just asked, what's your... How many alternates do you have?
We have three. We have Donna, we have Johnny Blackwood, and we have Nancy Spencer.
Oh.
She's still an alternate.
She's still an alternate. So, how many can you have?
I'm not sure. Victor can check into that, though, and get you an answer. How many?
Five.
Alternates?
Five alternates?
Yeah.
Wow.
Is that coming from a past chairman back there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can we help you, sir?
No, well, it depends a little later.
Oh, I see. I don't hear any public comments. Well, I'm sorry, did hear from Connor. Public hearings. We don't have any, but we do have a conditional use permit application. Well, it's like a public hearing. Submitted by Leonard Lloyd Tyon Bond Engineers for an easement owned by Public Service Company of New Hampshire, DBA EverSource Energy. The easement crosses over the following properties: Tax map 17944, 2194 Wakefield Road, tax map 186-6, 53 Church Street, tax map 197 lot 59, Wakefield Road, tax map 19768, Rhine's Road, tax map 197 lot 69, 327 Rhine's Road, and tax map 197 lot 70, New Hampshire North Coast Railroad. So, somebody's here for that one. Come on up. Let us know what you got.
My name is Kurt Nelson. I'm with EverSource. I do licensing and permitting for EverSource. I just thought I'd use the project team before we let money do this field. Again, I do licensing and permitting, joined by Tim Kelly. He's the project manager. And also joined by Jen Conspotty, and she's our outreach specialist. So, Jen has brought with her tonight some, we call them, "run pages," which are project descriptions that she can pass out to you. And probably the most important part of this is that you'll see on the bottom, we do have an email address and a phone number. I'll read it on the record. The number is 1-889-265-334, or email at newhampshireprojects info@eversource.com. So, that's just to get that on the record for anyone in the public who has any questions about this project or any other activities that might happen. So, we're here tonight for a 1.1 mile section of a distribution line, rebuilding an existing line and adding a new tie to the San Warrenville substation, which is on Cosmo Road, Cosmo Road?
Cosmo Drive.
Yeah. Ah, correct. And we'll be working in a stretch of right-of-way that begins on Rhine's Road, begins about a 1.1 mile stretch. We're here in front of you due to the wetland buffer impacts associated with the project. We met with the Conservation Commission last week and got a favorable opinion on that. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Lenny. And again, Lenny Board, hi, I'm John.
So, we need to look at this. So, here, Lenny Board, Tyon Bond Engineers. I'm an environmental scientist. And just to briefly outline the project map, so this is Cosmo Drive, and the San Warrenville Substation here. Branch River is right there, and then coming down this way is Rhine's Road. We're going to be, as Kurt mentioned, we're replacing one line and moving an existing line, so we're putting in a total of 31 steel monopoles. We're replacing some of the existing wooden poles, and then each one will be paired with another steel pole. So, there'll be two individual steel poles. We're seeking a conditional use impact or temporary wetland impact, so 5,452 square feet of wetland and 15,895 square feet of the 40-foot Wakefield water buffer. We have, I'm not sure if you can see it from there, but at each pole, there's a rectangle. Those are the work pads where the equipment needs to set up, and where those come up against the wetlands, we've trimmed those back so to keep them out of the wetlands. So minimizing impacts as much as possible. Where we do have to cross wetlands, we're using wooden mats, timber mats, and a lot of that work is needed to install spacers. Every 50 feet, there needs to be spacers to hold the lines apart. And so, we've got that. Over here at the Branch River, we've got impacts in the floodplain, but we're not actually doing a crossing there, so not directly impacting the river. So, they'll probably come in Rhine's Road all the way to this side, and Cosmo to that side. Let's see. Any ruts that are made will be smoothed out, stabilized, and contractors will have to follow the... There's a best management practices manual put out by the state, so that'll be part of the permitting, and they'll be required to follow that. And somebody from Tyon Bond will be out there on a weekly basis to make sure everything's good, that permits being followed, and all that. So, that pretty much summarizes it. If anybody has any questions. And me, or the rest of the team?
Just curious, is there going to be a difference in the height in the poles that are going to be replaced?
The... Yeah, we... The new poles' heights will be between 40 and 50 feet tall.
I'm sorry?
The new poles will be between 40 and 50 feet tall.
What are the current poles?
The current poles, like, we're not... We just realized in a parting like you that we're not 100% sure. We can get you that information. They may be 35, I'm guessing.
30 to 35. 30 to 35, and we're going to go to 40?
40. 40 and 50 with 45 being the most common pole height. In the application in front of you, in the back, there's a picture of a typical of what this construction will look like. It's weathered steel, so they're brown, and it's a hendric configuration, which is a bonded tape.
Thank you.
Yep. So, is the existing pole line going to stay, or the conduct is going to be transferred to the new poles?
They're going to build... The first step will be build this new timeline next to the existing.
Right.
And once that is in service, then they will deconstruct the existing and rebuild that existing.
So, is this a separate tie circuit?
Yes.
Existing circuit's going to stay, which is just a distribution circuit?
Yeah.
What are the voltages on the...
So, 34.5.
34.5? They both 34.5?
Yes.
So, there'll be two circuits there, rather than one?
There'll be two. Now, there'll be two different separate circuits feeding San Warrenville Substation, so it has a factory reliability. My understanding is that this will help us store power to over 4,000 customers in the area.
In the town of Wakefield?
Or... It may be in town.
Surrounding. Will the town benefit though from it, as far as... I know we have some power, I mean, just quite often. That would help with that?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Increases reliability substantially because with the two lines separated, if one of those lines was to fail for whatever reason, then you've got the other line being... The current configuration, if any of those existing lines fail, or those poles fail, then there's no way to feed this.
So, when you're finished, basically, there'll be essentially no impact left in place, or the impact is all construction impact? It isn't permanent impact? Is that correct?
That's correct. It's all temporary impact, and your ruts will be smoothed out, will be stabilized, the most...
Except for would be just the added poles, right?
Yeah, just, yeah.
You're adding, what, 15 or 16?
Yep.
And then doing something to another line on...
Yeah, so replacing the wooden poles that are there now with steel poles, and then there'll be another line, another 16 poles.
Thank you.
So, no additional culverts being added or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
No. No permanent structures other than the poles.
So, is it my understanding that they need the conditional use permit because that's what our zoning requires for any public utility work, but that they will also need a dispensation on the wetlands buffer as well? Then you say...
They're both, yep, they're both part of the conditional use.
So, they're both part of this application?
Yes, they're both part of the application.
Because you could be seeking just the conditional use permit without the... If you didn't have the other problem?
Right.
Okay. So, it's two things that we're going to be voting on: conditional use permit and the change in the buffer setback.
Can you guys cut that buffer setback now to maintain the trees underneath the wires? How do you guys...
It's all under the area that's already cleared.
Yeah.
But it's just, I don't know if you can see on here, it's pretty tough. I mean, the, you know, the buffers extend all the way across the existing utility. It's already cut. It's already open. And they just need to move the trucks through there, and they need to be able to put those spacers up every 50 feet so the lines don't come together.
So, it's still, it's like a, still like a temporary impact on that buffer too, but they keep it mowed all the time?
Well, the structures' impact will be permanently on... Are any of the structures actually on within the setback?
Let's see. Yes. So, you're right, there are permanent structures. It looks like maybe two.
I don't have a problem with the question of the change after the waiver or whatever we need to vote on, but if it's so we're clear, we're voting.
That's a good point, yep. It looks like, from here, it looks like there are two structures within the buffer.
And is that spelled out in the application?
I don't think so.
It's not spelled out separately. So, it will need to be... So, we still will need to vote on it, right?
Yeah, I think you can request that waiver.
Yes.
Request a waiver. But I don't know, you know, I don't think it needs to be noticed. People get waivers all the time. You know, you don't have to notice a waiver.
No, no, but we're going to need to vote on it.
Yeah, we could add the waiver.
Right. Okay.
Any other discussion by the board?
You said the voltage is going to be the same, right?
Sir?
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
You're with the pub... You're in a butter? Are you in a butter?
I'm unconscious.
All right, so, hang on one second. We'll open it up to the public as soon as we're done. Sorry.
I just wondered, I understood that the voltage was not going to change. It's two lines, but they're pulled the same voltage that's there now, so...
This is just an upgrade.
Yeah, it's a line, so if one line fails, they'll have another line that does one.
It's an up... It's the existing line isn't being changed. It's just being put on the new poles.
Yeah.
And then they're adding a second circuit for reliability, which is great.
Which they're saying it also will cause less power outages.
Yeah, yeah. I'm good with it.
All right, we'll open it up to the public. Just state your name and...
I'm Roland Rancourt. I just gave a name.
What's his name?
Oh, Roland.
I'm sorry.
Roland, what's your last name?
Rancourt.
Rancourt.
I'm Buck, 53 Church Street.
Any other comments in the public? Very kind.
Do they have to get a pole license for every one of those poles?
Not that I know of.
Good job.
I don't believe we do in our right-of-way easements. I know roadside distribution, that's definitely a practice, but I'm not aware of it being that in these right-of-way easements.
I'm sure they're all mock, though. You guys know what poles were.
Correct. Yep. Can I just make one more comment? It looks like, my quick assessment here, so the additional poles that are going in the buffer are going to be replacing poles that are coming out of the buffer, so...
Okay.
From what I can tell, there'll be no additional poles coming in. That's my quick scan.
Which they can mow that, which they got to mow it to maintain underneath.
But I assume we will still have to vote to want to put those structures in the buffer because our requirement is you can't build in 30-foot buffer, so just to be... So, all bases are covered. That should be included in what we vote on. I'm happy to vote for it, I'm just saying that I'll be in the vote.
Yeah, no, I'm with you.
Yeah. So, do we have that in our zoning? What number regulation that is, Richard?
On the buffer setback?
Yeah, on the buffer structure, so we can get one of these guys to rig and ask for a waiver for it.
Is it in the zoning, or is it in the...
It's got to be in the zoning. Oh, no, it's in the side plane.
Side plane rigs.
It is.
I have Article 9, Section E.
In the Wakefield zoning, or the side plane rigs?
Well, this is in the Wakefield zoning. I don't have the side plane.
That might have the buffer, does it say something about...
Yeah, I think it is in the zoning, and the planning board has the right to reduce that.
Yeah. But does it spell it out in there, though?
Yeah.
You got to put... You don't have a page, right?
No.
Article 9?
Article 9.
So, page 10, Table 2. Minimum setbacks, it's 30 feet from wetlands.
Footnote says, default to temporary.
It's not like you said, I think, I think you can, we can leave that or whatever.
Yeah.
So, if you look at page 10, footnote 8.
Spells it out in our zoning, what you can do in that...
Yeah, so, I'm paraphrasing, but says the designated wetland setback may be reduced by the planning board.
Yeah, we can reduce it.
That's page 10, Table 2?
Yes.
It's after table, table on the...
Minimum setbacks?
Yeah, yeah.
I still don't see it much better. I see wetland there.
Page 12, I think it's...
Wetland setback may be reduced by planning board, but not in event of less than acceptable applicable front side setbacks. So, front as well.
So, the setbacks on the front side and rear don't apply to a easement, I wouldn't think.
I wouldn't think so either.
But, and there shouldn't be any additional in the wetland area of things that you're doing, so...
So, if somebody wants to write us a waiver, we'll vote on a waiver from table 2, minimum setbacks, footnote...
8.
8, no?
Yeah, footnote 8.
Footnote 8.
Setbacks to shoreline.
There's no wetland setback.
But it's a reduction from a wetland setback, so we just need that. We can do it tonight, and we don't need to do it.
We're all in public hearings, so...
Not acceptable to setbacks to shoreline, but it's designated wetland setbacks that can be reduced by planning board.
Just hand written.
Yeah. Yeah. We're going to be just handwritten, so we can...
Can you just give me that citation again, table?
Table 2, wetland setback, minimum wetland setback. Do you want a waiver from the minimum wetland setback?
So, what it says is the designated wetland setback may be reduced by the planning board, but in no event should it be less than the applicable front side or rear setback. Upon a showing that additional runoff into the wetland area will not occur. So, you just basically, additional wetland runoff will not occur, and applicant requesting a reduction in the setback. How close are you going to be?
It's my quick assessment, will be at least five feet without poles, probably more, but...
Will be five foot into the setback, or you'll be within...
Five feet from the wet... So, we need a 25.
All right, so, within five feet is all we really need to say. Within five feet would be... But you won't be in the wetland itself?
Nope.
There've been a conservation too, and they've got it all set there.
It's good, just so we approve.
So, who are going to give us that waiver? I think we'd like to vote on the waiver before we go through the conditions of the conditional use.
Okay. I'm going to write that up.
Do we have any other comment from the public? Any further discussion here before we go into the... So, page 75. So, we got a list of seven criteria for a conditional use permit.
I make a motion that we accept the application.
It's been noticed, the button's been notified.
It is approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Connor's voted. She's aye. We're all ayes. Any names? Or any again? No, not here, no. So, why don't we get a... Do you guys want to just go down through them all? We read them. So, we want to go down through them all, and then we'll vote once?
Yeah, sure.
And we just talk, and just we'll make sure any of... We'll leave it open to the other that's here, or any other public comment.
Yep.
Leave it open every time we get done reading one of them.
Sure.
So, we know what the waiver is coming. Entertainer motion to accept, or entertain a motion for the waiver from Article 2, Table 2?
Some votes. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, that's four, 4-0. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. I see a vote. Yeah. That's a small vote, but it's a vote. We were going to sue this a lot, not soon, so... I've heard of that happening, you know, planning boards select ones, select ones, sue those planning boards. It happens another time.
It ain't going to happen to this town.
It shouldn't.
At least while I'm here.
All right, so, we're going to start going now through the, through the conditional use permit. Number one, and feel free to raise your hand to comment from the public if you need to. The proposed use shall be only those allowed in the order by conditional use, which it is. In our zoning, it is allowed.
Yep.
Number two, the proposed use is or are consistent with the adopted master plan. I'm sure it doesn't say specifically in the master plan that we want, you know, power lines everywhere, but we need power to sustain our community, and I'm sure that's...
And it's going to reduce power outages? That's a great thing.
Yes.
Number three, the specific site is in an appropriate location and of adequate size for the use. It's going where they are now, so it's a good thing. They're right away, yep. Number four, the use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located. The birds probably have a better view.
Well, I mean, there's poles there already.
Yeah, it's not changing.
You know, it's going to go up a few feet. Yes, though.
Not hearing any from the public. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
That's why it comes down.
The use will not place excessive or undue burden on town services and facilities. Can only help.
Right.
There would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health and safety and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located. It's already there now.
Yeah.
It's pretty much existed. So, I'll entertain a motion to vote all seven criteria of the conditional use.
I'm at, so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion from the public? Any further discussion from the planning board?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 5-0. Thank you very much. I'll take a picture of it. You have a copy if you want it, or you can always get it from Victor.
That's a good idea. Yep.
Could you read it into the record after you take the picture, just so we can all hear it?
We run this out, like, before we read it into the record. Somebody stand up and make sure it's got all the elements and shit down.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, bring it right up here. Yeah, bring it.
So, Public Service Company of New Hampshire, DBA EverSource Energy, request a waiver to reduce the wetland buffer setback from 30 feet, five feet as required under the Wakefield zoning. Table 2, footnote 8. From EverSource, signed by Kurt Nelson.
That's good. That works.
Good job.
Make a motion that we approve the reduction in the setback.
We already did. Oh, no, we already did.
We did it ahead of time.
Yeah, we did. We did it before we did the case. We just didn't have the paper.
Got behind the rest. I'm the oldest that's like...
Even you voted for it. All right, so you guys are all set?
Thank you very much. Thanks for your flexibility. So, that was for the conditional use and for the waiver.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Forward to the lights never blinking again.
Mr. Kelly, now you can tell us some true stories.
Yeah. Actually, it's going to be a great thing in this community, so looking forward to getting it built. I don't know if it was mentioned earlier, but the schedule for it, we're obviously in permitting phase now, and we'll hope to begin construction sometime in September, and we'll expect to wrap up by the end of the year.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Windy weather.
Okay, next we have a conceptual review for Alan and Mary McKillop. And you got George. Cottle Lane, tax map one thirty-three dash one, continuance of a previous conceptual review to subdivide their property.
Alright. The package I get when they were in first in the previous minutes from the first conceptual review.
And what was it for that?
Yeah, you were here.
What was that?
Yeah.
It was that long ago?
Yeah, it was last winter, the survey I came in, Pissin, Bison, and I'm not sure how you say it, but... It basically was just wanted to clarify a few things before he goes on to the, decides whether he wants to do this or not, but... I don't know if you remember. Where we're talking about. Off Stoneham Road.
Yep.
So he basically wanted off Stoneham Road is...
So again, before we get started though, it's non-binding, and we say tonight it's not binding between either party.
So it comes in off of Stoneham onto Stoneham Way, which is probably class six, but we don't know for sure. And then it goes on to existing private road, Cottle Lane, which there is a house at the end of that now, and that lane also has access to the, to the woodlot. And what he was proposing was to extend the road in to get road frontage from the end of where Cottle Lane is now into the, into the lot, the bigger lot, and create a five acre piece on the side. So... This is the summary of the survey, it's interpretation of the meeting.
We have that.
No, you have the map. That's the summary of his meeting with, I'm not sure who he met with, if he met with Victor or both of them, he says the plan is...
Yeah, he had came in and talked to myself, I must go colds for, for building inspector.
But I just, there was a few things that we needed to, a few things that make a big difference, actually. It, it says he needs a variance for the ZBA for the right of way for the first section, but there is nothing in the zoning about a fifty-foot right of way, it's in the site plan regulations. So we'd need a waiver from the planning board. Not a, not a, not a... Not a variance from the zoning block. Unless you guys can find it somewhere in the zoning too, but I can't find it.
So you take Stoneham Road and you go up to Cottle Way, and then what's that, say that right of way is from Cottle Way up to his land?
Cottle Lane.
That's not there now, they wanna extend that from there to there.
Yeah, yeah, Cottle Lane is...
But what is this?
That's already there.
That's Cottle Lane. It's about thirty-three feet existing now between stone walls.
So this is Cottle?
That's Stoneham Way, that's where Stoneham Road used to be.
This is Cottle Way, that's what they call this, right? And that exists.
So what Stoneham Way is, I don't know, it's, I mean, it's a road, but whether it's considered class six, it's not maintained by the town. And then Cottle Lane is, is existing, that's a private road that goes with Al's land. It's, it's part of the deed to his, to this bigger piece. And there, like I said, there is one house in there on Lot Four.
So it's part of...
His land.
You got thirty-three foot right of way that's up through the end now?
It's not a right of way, it's part of his...
It's part of his land.
He's giving an easement to these people, this is the...
It's not used by anybody else except him.
No, it's you, there's a house there, but there's no, there's no easement, there's no deed to easement, there's no nothing. That house is there, and he uses that road.
How long has he been in?
Thirty, forty years.
Long enough to say he can use it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, what does, how about, what does the deed say, is it in the deed? His deed?
For Lot Four?
No, Stone, that, this Cottle Lane is his property?
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
And the width is?
Oh, thirty-three feet or so between the stone walls.
So what is it to say?
So they screwed up, it used to be cattleway, not Cottle?
Cottle Lane was, Cottle was the...
Cattle, is it cattle?
Well, maybe, there's walls down here that look, there's an old foundation on his land, and you can see the walls leading down from that, like they used to herd cattle down to the lower fields, yeah. There's a cemetery in there too. Which, which have Cottles in it.
Whole Cottle family?
Yeah.
It wasn't cattle, it was cattle.
Yeah, it was cattle.
Definitely cattle.
You call it whatever you want, but it's, it's Cottle.
So that's a gravel road?
It's a, yeah, well, Stoneham, Stoneham Way is patently paved, patently gravelled.
That's abandoned by the town, it's actually eminent domain.
Yeah, and there's pavement on the hill going into Cottle Lane, but then it's dirt, dirt after that.
This is gonna be his own lot, is all I'm taking, right?
Yeah, that would be an extension, it would put one five acre lot to the right, and then leave the bigger lot. And, and then whatever, whatever you would need to extend that road in, you'd have a hundred, if it's a hundred and fifty feet for, or three, you'd have a hundred and fifty feet on each side of that road as frontage on each lot, the big lot and the five acre lot.
But, and he's gonna have to ask for a waiver, I'm not saying he'll get one, but he's gonna have to ask for a waiver not to bring the road up to town specs.
Well, he would bring...
Why do we have to bring it up to town specs for only one lot?
Well, he would put a gravel road...
If he did any further, then if he's subdividing off a lot, you gotta get the frontage on the road for any extra additional dwellings.
So you'd have, you'd have, you'd have the frontage to make the lot, which is a hundred, was it two hundred for five?
Two hundred for egg and...
Everybody know Lord Road?
Yes.
Okay, so Lord Road is a dirt road. It's not up to town specs.
Yeah.
If anyone wants to subdivide a lot off on, on Lord Road, they have to bring the whole road up to town specs.
Up to that parcel.
Up to that parcel. That's in our regulations, but that can be waived.
Yeah, by you, but not by...
That can be waived by the planning.
That's right, what, what, that's one of the points we wanna check on is that, you know, that he came back and said he need an extra variance from the zoning, but that's not in zoning.
But did he, we give him a, did we give him a zoning?
I think we were just talking about some different options when he came in, and Russ had mentioned right now you could go in and build the house right now and that, and then...
But that isn't what he, that isn't what he came back and said, he came back and said... He said to apply for a building, he said the next step is to...
That triggers a variance, that was Russ's suggestion in order to get if it...
To apply for a building permit and get rejected, but I don't know why he would get rejected right now.
Well, it was a mistake, obviously, he thought you would need a variance rather than a waiver.
Okay.
Mistake on our office's part, apologize.
And, um... Yes, he would need a, he'd need a waiver from the, for the fifty-foot right of way, and then the road...
Well, to bring it to town specs.
Yeah, to bring it to town, yeah.
It'd need them both.
Yeah.
Because obviously you can't put a road in there for town specs on a thirty-three foot right of way.
So is a town spec simply the width of the road?
Well, the town, you could probably get the width, because it's twenty foot, under private, uh...
Just the right of way would be two now.
Roads, you says, you know, you can, you can have a gravel road twenty feet wide with four foot shoulders. So you could, you know, you could almost get that in there now, but you couldn't, you know, you couldn't get your fifty foot...
So you still need a waiver on the, on the width of the...
Oh, you need a waiver on it, because...
Right, the width of the...
But I'd rather get a waiver than try to bring that, the Stoneham, I mean, Cottle Lane up to the specs, because that would prohibit the, the whole thing, because it would cost too much, obviously, but...
So you're saying that you would wanting to get a waiver of the construction of the road?
No.
Just the width?
Just the width.
A width of the right of way?
It, it says, it requires, you know, the, the road right of way to be fifty foot, minimum right of way, fifty foot.
But you could actually build to town specs the actual width of...
You could.
Travelled way and the shoulders.
You would have another, you got thirty, we got about thirty-three feet, so you, you know, you technically, you could probably add gravel and increase the base, but...
Is that what he's proposing to do?
No, we'd rather get a waiver on that part, because it, that's an existing, you know, it's, you're only, potentially could add two, two house lots, you know, the big, the big lot and the, and the five acre. But right now he's only contemplating selling the five acre lot and building one house, so you'd add one, the most you'd have is two, two residents using the road.
And it's three that would change it totally, right?
No.
Three makes it a subdivision of...
Well, it, it falls into a major subdivision any time you're building a road, so... He would be building a road onto, on his own existing land now.
I, I know, you know, some of you guys haven't been here for a long time, but, or as long as I have, and I've seen a few of these come into us, okay? They ask for waivers from, you know, doing, you know, all the topo and everything, 'cause if you don't do a, I think that's not in our zoning anymore, major subdivision versus minor subdivision. It's good, if you did a minor subdivision and you wanted waivers, you couldn't do it again, you couldn't subdivide your land again.
Right, right.
I think that's out.
Yeah, it is out.
So we did a couple of those though, on dirt roads. So we were able to give people that waiver because they were giving something.
They were giving up the right to subdivide again.
Giving up the subdivide, like I, when I did my conservation subdivision up on Bello Lake, on the backside, instead of going across the brook, I got like six lots on the other side that I was able to subdivide that was not on a town up to standard roads, and they gave me a waiver. But I also gave a hundred and fifty-five acres of open space. So there was, not saying that...
It was give and take.
It was just give and take, 'cause, 'cause everybody that's on a dirt road right now that's not up to town specs could come in and do a subdivision, whether they have sixty-five acres or, or, you know, or ten acres, they could subdivide it off two. So, you know, a precedent has been set to a certain extent. But I mean, what says that George isn't gonna come back in to, you know...
Right, to ask for another two or three blocks.
Do another, you know, footage and, and do it again.
Well, the condition of, the condition of approval could be that there would be no further subdivision unless the road is brought up to specs.
And, and I guess that would be up to the applicant to come to us to say it's part of you guys waiving this, this is what we would give.
Yeah.
Right? So that, to me, that might be something that would... So you'd be asking for a waiver on the width and bringing the road up to...
Well, we gotta look at our, our, you know, regs. Look at our regs and see what it need waivers from.
The new section would be built to town specs?
New section would be, yeah, which is, which states a gravel road, twenty feet wide, four foot shoulders, and a...
With a fifty-foot right of way.
But why does it, what's it say that for? 'Cause that's not town specs.
Yeah, it is private road.
For a private road.
That's what you gotta clarify, of the pavement versus the non-pavement?
Yeah, well, in this, in the...
There's a spec for a private road, and there's a spec for...
Well, it would be a private. But in the, in his summary, he's...
We don't accept roads.
He said that the road would have to be paved and twenty-two feet wide with two foot shoulders.
Yeah.
But if it's a private road, it's gravel is acceptable.
Can't pave that for one house?
No. And the other, so I think we're, we've got those things, obviously, we'd need a waiver, you know, need a waiver from you guys, but it sounds like it makes sense, I mean, considering he's only adding one five acre lot. It also says a sub, after the subdivision, the homeowners association would need to be created for each lot using the road, including the last house on the left.
What's gonna happen with the house that is using that road now?
That's their problem, they built it, yeah.
Well, I mean, you just can't take his access away from him.
He's not, they can't legally in the state of New Hampshire.
No.
They have, he has...
There's no intention to take it away, but he, you know, he built, I mean, he just went in and built it and took a chance in the first place, and he survived in there long enough so that he's kinda got...
Intimate domain would come in to play with that.
Yeah, and we, and somebody here in town gave him a permit to be able to build there, but we're looking at it like, okay, wouldn't you guys wanna get together now? You guys are trying to do something, he's in a butter, you know, wouldn't you wanna try to get some monies from him each year to help maintain the private road, that type of thing?
Possibly.
And, and also maybe look at it, if, if he goes to sell that property, the town wouldn't want the new owner to be in some sort of bind because they weren't able to use that road or there's some sort of legal issue, so I, I think another, again, this is all non-binding, right? But if, if you guys came to the board and said, hey, part of our plan is, is to create a row association and to include all of the properties that now access that, including that house on Lot Four, it, it, I think the town, I think the, the board might be more in favor of that, because it protects whoever is gonna own that house in the future.
That would be fine, I would prefer to run it, but he's under no obligation to do anything.
Yeah, and why would, why would they be in an obligation to have...
So you're right, you're right.
Why would they be in an obligation to have, to form an association on his own road? This is his road.
I mean, it could, it would definitely be something in the deeds that obviously gives the... Well, if I buy the five acre piece, they would state that they have the right to access...
On that piece, but on this guy in the four, his problem will be if he goes to the bank and sells it, they're going to want to see an easement on that. And that would be a concern that may be for him, but for these people, they need to go to him and ask him for permission of an easement or something.
No.
But, but in legal aspects, they've been using it for over twenty years.
And he doesn't have a right of way in his deed or anything?
But, but I just think you might have that leverage of saying to him, look, if you go and try to sell it and you don't have legal access, any access at all, except for you were a mulch that I've been using it forever.
We must be able to figure that right out, no problem, I'm just saying he's under no obligation.
He's not, but if you can get him under obligation now, it's only gonna benefit him.
Well, I think he, I think he would want a, at least a title, something saying in the deed that he has some kind of easement to get there, you would think so.
That could be maybe the trade-off.
It makes common sense, and that, that would be a nice thing as a neighbor to do with his neighbor. But other than being under the obligation, that guy on four, we shouldn't, he's not even, he should have had this consideration when he built the...
Yeah, exactly, he took a chance when he built it.
Yeah, back then it was...
And there was a lot less, there was no zoning, there was no anything.
And that's why it was done that way, because it was just a road, it probably nobody ever knew.
He probably asked the guy that owned, was Ernie, Ernie Lee.
Looks like there was a little subdivision there, see the subdivision?
Yeah, but there's no technical, nothing, no way down.
You see what I mean, they just kinda subdivided it.
And he probably went to the owner of Al's land at the time and said, can we go out? And he said, yeah, and that was the end of it.
With the, the approach as a neighbor to neighbor would be a nice thing to do so that there's no conflict, some conflict in the future, so something happened to you or something, your kids or whoever would get this, would never have that issue or...
We've just seen people just go and block off roads.
Yeah.
You're not passing anymore. It's my land, you're not going.
Yeah, it's not...
Find a different way, or...
Yeah, no, that's not...
It's fine at the moment, but when you change hands and need, and need your own kids...
I wouldn't imagine that a bank would give a mortgage for the place right now.
Exactly, without, without an easement.
Without, without something, but that hasn't come up yet, so...
But anyway, I think those are some of the things that you guys gotta think about or talk about. Make sure you got all the waivers, make sure you look at them good.
No, I just wanted to clarify a few things about the, especially about the, the variance versus a waiver.
Yeah, I was, unless, you know, I, I haven't seen it in the zoning, but...
Nothing I can find, it's not there.
Right of way doesn't...
I'm ninety-nine percent sure it's always in our regs.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because we've gotten, we have given people waivers from it in the past. We did, we did one up on, off of Route sixteen, what was the name of that, the road that go, Bancroft Way. We gave one up there.
Oh, there's a whole bunch of them in town.
They said, wouldn't further subdivide, or was this, that, or the other, and it was always something.
Well, that's why this one's a little, you know, he only wants to create one lot, so there's obviously not...
Yeah, right now, right, but he has the prerogative to change his mind.
Well, yeah, or somebody else does.
Down the road someday.
Then you just end up, whoever has to do it has to bring that other road up. And it's a dead-end road, so it's twenty feet with four-foot shoulders.
Yeah.
As opposed to the twenty-two, which is if it's a local road that connects.
Yeah. Well, gravel versus pave makes a big difference, obviously.
It'll make a difference in cost.
Yeah, like, you will do it or you won't.
Yeah, for five-acre lot, I mean, for one lot, that doesn't even make sense.
No.
So this will often be done with the planning board, not...
Yeah.
Any comment on it?
I believe that was it. There'd be, obviously, could be proposed some other waivers for, like you said, topographic and full survey and that kind of stuff.
Definitely, I can ask for a waiver for the, not doing the topo and the whole...
Can ask.
Right. Boundary survey, though, you got a boundary survey done?
No.
Yeah, you probably need a boundary survey.
The whole piece.
But as far as steep slopes, wetland delineation and all those other things, you know, you may not need it, but you'll need the wetland delineation for the five-acre lot.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
But to read back sixty-four, probably not, or sixty or fifty-nine, whatever it's gonna be, we could waive that, but you gotta have boundary survey to have a subdivide of the five-acre.
It makes sense to do a survey and read for five acres, I mean, so you know exactly where it is and pin it.
We don't know if you have sixty-four acres there, or you could have one.
Right, but it's a lot, it's a big job to do, to do it all.
Been there, done that, I know.
Can only ask. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Get all that?
I got all that.
Gonna serve on any of the committees with me?
Show up. Name it.
Spent hours and hours working and then have no one read it or follow it?
What?
Yeah.
I hear there's not much to follow.
What, you leave our board and you go and do all kinds of other boards?
I already did one with Priscilla. Nobody bothered to read it or follow it.
I say you withdraw, please.
Well, see you, Steve.
See you.
Bye, Steve.
Bye, Steve, thanks. So can't do any minutes?
Is that what we're determined, or can we do last week's minutes? Last week we couldn't do it, but Dave Silcox wasn't here, he isn't here.
Charlie and I were at the eleven, so we can do that one.
There you go, it's okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of July eleventh.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Priscilla. Any other further public comment? Next meeting will be August first.
I got one thing.
Go ahead.
If I may. I didn't get it on.
I don't see it on it.
I, I...
Hope it's not long.
I did, but it's concerning the last meeting. Thanks, Priscilla and Bridget. I just wanted to pass this out, it's homework for you guys.
Oh, thanks.
So this is pertaining to the ADU.
Okay.
Back from when you guys brought it in, back when that was, we go back to, excuse me, back to two thousand and sixteen. So I got various minutes, agendas, and then in the back we've got the state wardage on the accessory dwelling units, and actually I did find a clause in there, so if a municipality doesn't get it right, doesn't bring it in, or the warding's right, you default to the state, which allows the detailed state.
Good for you.
So that's just, I put it together, haven't really had much time to go through it, there'll be more coming, but...
Good for you. Good job.
Well, like I said, thanks to Priscilla and Bridget Priscillala, so it was a team effort.
Thank you very much.
No, good, good job, good job.
I like doing that research stuff. I do.
I love to help, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So we issuing permits right now, or not?
Well, we're not, in our office, we feel that we should have thrown a motion to adjourn.
I just got here.
All those in favor?
You just said it.
Aye. Aye.
Who seconded that?
Yeah, Ritzie did.
Did I? Oh, yeah, I'm getting old.
It was only a second.